This conference will now be recorded.
Six oh one on August fifteenth. The only thing that I'll just let you guys know, I did get a request this morning to reschedule the meeting because the town's website wasn't necessarily up to date, but it was posted. It was posted inside. Felt that the best interest of the abutters and the applicant themselves was to hold it on the meeting that it was the date of. So that was the only thing that came up while we were, while we were off there. I'll agree with that.
Yep, to keep to continue, yep.
Okay, we will hear case ZB twenty-three dash fourteen. Okay, sorry about that. So if you just come right up and speak into that mic, and usually how we do it is we have you read your application into the record.
Okay.
And then you give us a little description of what you're doing.
Correct.
Might be some questions and then some public comment and we go from there. A little tedious when we read the applicant word for word into the record.
Okay, so even the verbiage that you put in there as well?
Just if you started the facts supporting the request.
Okay.
And then down from there.
Alright, so section one?
Yeah.
Yes.
Okay. And you know, I'm going to read your verbiage as well or just my answers?
If you could, yeah.
Okay, Varance has requested for the article. I handed her in the paperwork, so I don't have the section or whatnot.
Seven section apartment.
Never got a true copy of it. It's seven section?
Section seven, appendix B.
Okay. Of zoning ordinance to permit automotive shop. Back supporting this request, granting the variance would not be contrary to the public interest because that while there's no adverse effect on the public interest, I run a landscaping business out of the same space or building. Done a lot of improvements and plan to do more along with helping local residents. Number two, the variants were granted in spite of that ordinance would be observed because we would continue to enhance the property in a positive way. You know, we're very big on organization and curb appeal. Number three, granted the variance would do substantial justice because it would create more jobs for local residents along with helping the community. Number four, the events were granted, the values of the surrounding properties would not be diminished because, well, again, we're in, we're in the business of enhancing properties and helping people. That's what we do. You know, we're about curb appeal and we continue to enhance and accent the neighborhood. Five unnecessary hardship owing to a special condition of the property that's distinguished it from other properties in the area, denial of the variance would result in necessary hardship because no fair substantial relationship exists between the general public purposes of the ordinance provisions and the specific application of the provision to the property because I operate a landscaping business out of this space. You know, we were 100% about curb appeal and keeping things neat. So the business is already equipped for another business. It was already split apart in three different ways. So in terms of electric meters and all that, it's, it's already set up. When I bought it, that's how the whole space was, was, you know, set up already. And we work on all of our, you know, quick equipment now for the landscaping business. And, you know, in the past, there's been repair shops, fabrication, welding operations along with power repair and installations. And the proposed use is a reasonable one because GTM landscaping operates out of the same building. We work on all of our equipment already. Local residents have in the past have inquired about repairs on vehicles and such nature. We're in the business to help people out and we want to give back to the community. B, explain how if the criteria in the sub paragraph, A, are not established in unnecessary hardship will be deemed to exist if and only if owing to a special condition of the property that distinguishes it from the other properties in the area. The property cannot be reasonably used in strict conformance with the ordinance and the variance is therefore necessary to enable reasonable use of it. Myers Welding in the past worked on various equipments and vehicles at this property. Again, he had a welding and fabrication shop along with repairing plows, et cetera. There are no neighbors that have disagreed or complained about his operations, you know, when he was occupying that space. I have read one of the uses allowed in the, is for, for the space I'm in, the way it's owned, is sale and rental of boat watercraft, including services and repairs. Essentially, it's all the same type of work that would be done on a boat that we would do in a car, you know? We're not looking at, we're not doing tires. We're not doing, you know, that type of stuff in terms of automotive, like we're just looking to do repairs on automotive. That's all, that's what we're looking to accomplish.
Thank you. So I, just so I understand, you're already running a landscape business out of here. So your operations for your landscape come out of the same building?
Correct.
There are vacant storefronts as part of the building?
So I have a tenant that's up front, canine clipping.
I think it's a dog.
Booming.
I, and that's perfect and that would always stay. I have two bays in the back. The small one, we operate our landscaping business out of. The larger bay is all this space. So we already have the space. So I'm not looking to do an addition. I'm not looking to do anything like that. And what's nice about this property is we're set to the back. So, you know, if we had, you know, four or five cars here, no one's going to know from the road because the, we have a U horseshoe driveway, you know, that, you know, we have two ways of exit and entrance. So everything would be in the back.
Okay, thank you. And you aren't using that storage for your?
Well, currently we're using it like, because we have the space. So you know what I mean? We'll go, you know, we'll go through our mowers, sharpen our blades, we'll do that stuff. But it's a pretty big space. I could, you could probably, you could fit three cars in it easily with plenty of room for safety and all that, like plenty, yeah.
When you say you just want to do repairs but not tires, I just trying to get my head around like, what does that, what does it mean?
Yeah, so like if someone needed like a tire rod or something, or someone needed, you know, a transmission put in, or they had a, you know, U joint, or, you know, just thing on the mechanically inclined, you know, that type of stuff. We're not looking to open up a tire shop. Tires take too much room. I'm not looking to stage or store things like that nature at all. Not interested. You know, if someone came up to us, if this was all approved at some point, you know, and they pass us for, oh, I got something in my tire, yeah, we would take it down the road to someone and have them just fix it. Do you know what I mean? We're not interested in doing any of that. I'm not getting a tire, I wouldn't want to get a tire machine. It's, that's not, that's nowhere near where I want to be. We just want to do the repairs on things that, you know, on vehicles or trucks, you know what I mean? Because, I mean, we kind of do the same thing on our mowers, you know what I mean? We do, we do the same stuff. And I got a, I got a really good guy that knows all of that. He's been doing it for like seventeen years. So it'd be great if he could do that with me.
I'm trying to hog that.
So you're not looking to rent it out to an operator? JTM is going, GTM is going to operate this repair shop?
Well, it's not going to be GTM. It'd go to another entity name, but it would be, I'm going to be the owner.
Leanne, just so I can understand, so the variance or the zoning doesn't, I apologize for not knowing this, doesn't restrict repair, it restricts automotive repair?
Correct.
Okay.
As it said in there in one of the articles, that boat repairs or sales of boats was okay for that space.
Questions right now, guys?
Questions?
Yeah, I, I believe in something I read here that was part of your application that it appeared that during the daytime hours that most everyone was out of the, out of the business and doing their work elsewhere, is that correct?
Yes, exactly.
So right now, you do not have necessarily anyone who would like a mechanic who would be there in the building full time?
You mean while, while we're operating the landscaping?
That is correct.
Well, we have a guy sometimes that might be there here and there, like if something, some fluke thing came up, like if he had a problem with the mower, he would probably sit back and fix it for a minute and then get that all resolved. And then they go out, but yeah, during the day, everyone's out on the field and, and they're, they're gone for the day.
So if you opened up this auto repair business, that means you would have someone there full time, seven, five days a week?
Five days a week. Yeah, I would, yep. Right now, like, because obviously things in the landscaping business, it's seasonal, right? So like in the winter time, we're plowing. If we're not plowing, we're going through our equipment. So, you know, we've had, you know, our own staff there during the day and in, you know, doing stuff in the past here and there as it was needed. Because if there's a repair, I only have, we don't do that stuff on the weekends, so it's done during the week, right? So if we're doing like any servicing on our equipment, we're doing that during the week. So it really depends on what pops up and what doesn't, you know, for our own equipment's sake.
I, I do notice that in the back of the lot, there appears to be a rather large area, which apparently is a gravel surface.
Correct.
Now, on, I have not gone and done a site inspection, so I can't, I don't know the answer to this, but my question to you is, does that, does the, the back section, which would be, let's say, closest to the railroad tracks, does that pitch uphill or downhill? I'm trying to figure out because if you're going to be getting automobiles in there that may be in need of repair, there very well could be some leakage of oil and other liquids and so forth onto the gravel surface. And I have a concern that any water runoff during some of these downpours could end up, I mean, right now, it appears that you're, the back property line on your property is probably within, it's less than 300 feet from the river.
I'd, I'd have to look.
No, well, I've got a copy of, of something here and anyway. As a matter of fact, when I, when I scaled it out on, on this particular map, and I looked at the 250 feet here, and you take a look at that distance and you look down toward the river, you are probably under 250 feet from the river. And I guess I have a concern that any kind of auto leakage, fluids, whatever, that might come from vehicles being maintained would not, how that, how you intended to treat that, or whether or not you have considered putting in, making sure that the back part of that parking lot is elevated so that it would contain runoff? And whether or not you've considered putting in an oil-water separator to make sure that any liquids that run out of there toward the river would be cleansed?
The back parking lot, this year, we actually already added material over there because it was a rocky hard pack substance. So we added some to fix some, you know, elevation and pitch. If you were to drive by, you'd see I have another pile, I have a pile there that we plan on spreading to exactly do that. Because we had to do the same math when we, when we got approved to put the salt bin in. So everything's locked in where it is and it's pitched, it stays contained. So I'm very well aware and understand what you're saying. So yes, we would, you know, pitch that as we need to, you know what I mean, to not let it go to the train track or whatnot, or, or in that direction. We've already started. There's actually, most of the parking lot on the right side of it is already pitched towards the building. I did it because we had material and we wanted to fix it anyways because, you know, we ended up, you know, scuffing some up and we're doing some work. So we added some more gravel, hard ledge pack to the, to the.
Okay, um, Mr. Pellerin, I don't see this as unnecessary hardship on your reasoning for, you know, going for a hardship for this automotive business.
Well, I mean, I, I feel like there's been other places in town that are, that have garages. I know that theirs are, you know, a lot that I've seen, you know, look really all jammed up in the front, high visibility, does look nice. I'm set up 10 times better than that in, in terms of, you know, occupying the business. I have this space. It's, it's my, the building is set up for three businesses.
I understand that, but we have a copy of when Mr. Meyer was there and he was not, he didn't get approved for a.
Well, I'm having a hard time understanding.
Yeah, he didn't get approved.
Mr. Meyer's application from 2009.
Yeah, he didn't get approved for it.
It looks like he was looking to sell cars. It seems much grayer to me.
No, he has auto repair on here.
Yeah, the applicants, in the applicant's application, auto sales are not applied for, as noticed by the board included in his decision, auto sales. So like he had included in the zoning board's original decision, they were going to allow auto sales. I don't know, it just gets.
Yeah, they just, but he has auto repair on here and they, they didn't approve it.
Notice of decision contained verbiage allowed the auto sales of not more than three vehicles that are unregistered, uninspected at one time. So they were, it seems like it was larger, a larger ask now and a saying that makes it off the map. It just seems like when Mr. Mayor was asking for whatever he did here in 2009, it, it ended up being more than just auto repair and to sell cars out of the slot. Did anyone else take the same?
Well, they did make a very clear decision on that, that auto repair was not to be included.
Right, they don't give, they don't give why. Only in the selectman's letter, they say, discuss the criteria for the use variance. Applicant never went over the criteria of the board, so the board could not determine whether or not the criteria met. And then they talk about no findings of facts, that the public or applicant could know where the board had considered their quest, their quest to reach a decision. No reasons were given to the conclusion reached by the board. The notice of the decision contained verbiage which allowed auto sales of not more than three vehicles that are unregistered and uninspected at one time. And they quote an RSA, it states no more than one unregistered and inspected vehicle that is not over 25, and it goes on and on and on. The board can make rules stricter than the United States RSA, but they cannot permit something more lenient. And in the board's application, auto sales are not applied for, nor was it noticed, but the board included it in its decision. Auto sales are not permitted use in the midst of, actually in the, the, the selectman's case for a rehearing, they don't actually quote anything about auto repair.
Are you in the March or the May, May one?
I'm in April fifteenth, 2009, to the zoning board of adjustment amendment from, to motion for rehearing letter dated March 26th, 2009, for the CBA case of oh nine dash oh six. When the town selectman asked them to rehear the case when they granted it. There are five criteria that they asked for, made their case to rehear it. They don't mention auto repair even once in their case for rehear.
Uh, yeah, on the May one, it is.
Go to May.
May, the May nineteenth, 2009. You look at the second paragraph.
No, I understand, oh, sorry.
Right here, this one. Tells you about working on automobiles. Yep.
Well, I guess this is where it gets gray. And this actually brings me right back to the, the thing I don't understand about this. And I'm hoping maybe Leanne can provide some question, some clarification for me. The chair addresses the issue of working on automobiles. The way I see it is you can't do what a service station would do, but as far as welding goes, you've been welding things back together on automobiles since you opened your doors. You can continue to do that and need nothing further from the town. The chair confirms is correct according to the audience. Well, yeah, that's, that's what the ordinance is. That's why you're asking for a variance. Any business coming to town to change your use would require to go to the ordinance to go for more planning board for a site, yeah, yeah, so I'll go back to planning board. So what they're saying here is, under the zoning ordinance, you can't have an automotive repair shop.
Right.
That's all they're saying there. But he can work on cars, he just can't have an automotive repair shop. I don't really understand the, I don't understand that. That seems very gray to me. What defines an automotive repair shop? Bodywork? Is that an automotive repair shop?
Well, I know that Mr. Mayor did the welding and he was allowed to do the welding and working on plows, but there is a difference between that and doing auto repair as previously decided by earlier zoning board as well as planning board. So if we were to go contrary to that now, we would be needing to grant an exception to what has already been previously decided.
Well, in zoning, there's no, you don't set precedence. So yes, there is a previous case and we can consider that in our discussion, but precedence isn't set by this. It's just information we can use in our, in our deliberating here. But I, I still don't feel as though it's been well defined to me what constitutes automotive repair. So can, can a body shop operate here without a variance? Can you answer that, Leanne?
I, I don't know if I can answer that, the definition of auto repair.
Okay, but you can work on a, on a outboard motor, on an engine, a boat here. You can do, you can do maintenance and service on boat motors. You could have an, you know, an eight cylinder boat motor in there.
As an allowed use.
As an allowed use. But I don't understand, I don't understand the intent of this is where I'm lost. I'm hoping somebody can help me understand. Is what is the, if the concern is fluid runoff, which is a totally legitimate concern, is not addressed in boat repair? Not addressed in lawnmower repair? It's automotive. So is it a, is it a, a storage on the lot issue? Is that what the concern is? No, do you have any insight on that?
I've read what you've read.
Okay.
And I've expressed that I have concerns about vehicles that are parked outside. I have to assume, and but I don't know this, that there is sufficient ability inside the building to contain any fluids and that there is, there would be, I mean, without going down and doing a sidewalk or looking at what's on the inside, I would have no idea how, how the drains are with, I mean, some of the buildings that are older have drains that go right out underground and like I do in my own garage.
Sure, yeah.
And so I have no idea.
Leanne, does this have to go to planning if it gets approval from here?
Yes.
Is all that addressed in planning?
The runoff and, yes.
Yes. It looks like planning looked at this when it came to lawnmower maintenance.
Yeah, GTM went to planning when it, when it changed use to a landscaping business.
Yeah, October nineteenth, twenty ninth, 2019 meeting after due public hearing, completed its consideration. And proposed expansion of use to include the daily operation of GTM landscaping. Area as well as temporary storage of paper. As a result of such consideration, you've approved it following unnecessary state and local permits, do comply with state and local codes. Lighting, outdoor storage of material should be depicted on the plan in compliance with best management practices as outlined in the D S environmental frac sheet. All floor drains, if existing, shall be removed. That probably answers our question there. I missed that, Chuck. It does not have any floor drains.
And I, I do have a concern that, that when I'm looking at what's on the application about trying to suggest that there's some kind of proof or evidence of a hardship, I don't see any. I do understand that you, your confusion of whether or not some gray area of automotive repair, but right now, there, in my estimation, when I'm looking at what's written here, there is no hardship. Other than the fact that they are looking to add another business for profitability's sake.
Sure, I, I guess I don't understand the allowing maintenance on engines, but not all engines, only specific engines in cars. I don't understand that.
I mean, because some GTM, is that the right, some of their mowers are probably diesel and have 10, 15 gallon tanks on them or gas.
There's no diesel, it's gas.
Yeah, but there's probably 10 gallon tanks or 15 gallon tanks on the mowers.
Can you work on a, on a, Leanne, would you be able to work on a Bobcat in this, without a, a variance?
I don't know, I'm trying to load up, see if I have a definition in the ordinance for auto repair.
Okay.
But it's taken a minute to load.
Uh, well, would, do you guys mind if we do some public comment here?
No, that's, yes, great.
I said you were butter, so.
Yeah.
You just got to put your name into that record on the mic there.
Joe Dayhi, I live across the street on East Main.
Good to talk into the mic though, thank you.
I'm wondering if that, all your rules and regs came up because of the old auto repair shop that used to be across from the police station? That became a superfund site.
That's some great context.
The old Ernie's.
Yeah, it's the, where the, where the park is now?
Yes.
Yeah.
I'm sure auto repair has been going on when, or he bought the place. I mean, they had a limousine service in there, they were repairing their own. He's, he seems decent, he's quiet, there's never any issues. There is a major runoff that his, does slope to him and his neighbor. But his neighbor's causing more problems than he is with auto repair and running a wrecker and used vehicles everywhere. I don't, I don't see a, a problem with it. You know, I have worked in that garage before and there used to be floor drains that went right out to that drainage ditch. I mean, if those are closed up and he has obviously done what he had to do with the salt to protect for water runoff. Okay, maybe you make him put a cement pad. You want to park the cars, put a cement pad down, park them on that. You know, there's simple ways to get around the oil. That's probably the, the easiest thing to solve.
Thank you. Can we have somebody else? You got to talk to the microphone?
I can get up there.
Yeah.
I should know this by now.
Yeah, you should.
My name's John, Scott Long Morrison Ave. So I just found out about this last night and I, I just want to contact you, obviously, yeah. And it was because it was not listed where we typically find those things. So a lot of the residents don't know what happened. That's where everybody always goes to look for what's going on at CBA and it didn't show anything, so. But, but yeah, thanks for looking into it. Two places, what's required, so, but that could also answer why some people aren't here tonight, because they, they did express to me.
But all the, they're abutters?
They're abutters were notified.
Yeah, so they're all notified.
The abutters were notified.
And, but now, if we go through, you'll excuse me because I didn't have much time between working and everything.
Take your time.
They're going, so getting back to Mayor's, just a little bit of information. When Mr. Mayor went to sell his property, he was trying to find a, a good buyer and get as much money as possible. The town offered to buy it for police station and stuff like that. And he was trying to get a variance so they could sell it as a place where you could work on cars or you could sell cars or anything like that. And that went on for many years. I think he bought from Mr. Mayor? No? Yeah. So, yeah. So, you know, it went, so it's very confusing, but that's where we did, kept going back, back and forth. And that's why there are all these strange requests for it. So, and I'm looking at the application and I can say that, Mr. Pellerin, it's a beautiful lot. You've really made it nice, landscaped everything, the sign is beautiful, there's flowers out there. And that's great. The thing of public interest is that we created zoning areas in town and they were voted on by the legislative body and one, the zoning, they, they passed very significantly with majority votes as to where they want to allow automotive, where they don't, where they want to have nice neighborhoods, where they want to have small businesses, big businesses, industrial. And I know you guys know all that stuff. This is one that was, they specifically said that they didn't want to have there was automotive repair. And the reasons are, is as the other zoning areas slowly start encroaching, it becomes, well, the guy up the street's doing it, so I can do it and that do it. So we lose all of our zoning in the town, which is also backed by our master plan that we don't, we want to have specific areas for residential as well as businesses and that. Now, I have no doubt that Mr. Power would run a good business. He does take care of the area, right? But you're granting a zoning for that piece of property. And if you sell your, if Mr. Power, sorry, I'm going to address you, Mr. Power sells his property and then we get somebody who is, operates a business very similar to what we have done by Dunkin' Donuts, it's a code enforcement nightmare. It's a code enforcement nightmare. And neighborhood goes, it, it's horrible. Now, when it comes to curb appeal, it looks beautiful up front, but if you, I think you guys have an aerial map?
Yeah.
Take a look at the map. And you see that there's a very short distance, um, you know, out front that is on Route Three and that looks nice and everything. But if you look at the curb part on Morrison Ave, that's actually elevated, I'd say, eight, ten feet, and it looks directly into the parking lot there, all of it. So, and that's the only entrance to Morrison Ave. So everybody, if they're coming to purchase a house or visit somebody there or have company over, they go around that corner and they look into, we don't know what could be there in the future. Presently, um, Mr. Powerin lines all of his trucks perfectly up. Everything looks really nice and that's all done. That's, you know, where, yeah, the curb appeal from Route Three looks good, but once you put stuff, put stuff out there in the back, it's going to change that whole curb appeal. The other part of the public interest is that noise that comes from garages, and it's not changing tires. But if you change ball joints, you could put an air wrench on it and you're gonna, the neighbors are gonna hear it. Not everybody works just in the day. Some people work at night. Sleep during the day, so they would be subjected to that. And it has a little bit of a amphitheater effect back there. The other part of that is we have the rail trail, which is, if you look at the map, runs right alongside the railroad there. And it's an all natural area. There's a lot of wildlife. There's eagles. There's herons that go out back through there, um, deer, bear and everything else. And people take walks up that road, up that path and ride on it, specifically because of the natural beauty. There's no guarantee that in the future that will always remain that, because now it becomes an automotive shop or an accepted use for automotive shop. There was number three creates jobs. When this per, property was purchased, it was still in the exact same zone with the same regulations, which allows for a real wide variety of businesses. Um, there's, if you look at the acceptable uses, there's a lot, which in, um, I don't have in front of me, but except that it's, give the boats and all that, and I accept that. But it doesn't say for automotive, but there's all those other uses. So there's no hardship, because you could open up all those other businesses in there and utilize for that. The hardship would be what's imposed on the neighbors and, and such. And likewise, if it's sold again in the future. For notes, um, the other concerns are, is they're gonna have to come back for a variance on parking. If you look at the picture and the lot size, and I realize it's planning, but it's going to be a very difficult. I mean, I didn't want to start getting into it too far if it's not nicely feasible.
I mean, I'd say that's out of purview. If he has to come back for another variance, that, so be it.
Okay.
We're considering this variance now and he may not get that next variance.
So the whole crux of my talking to you is that I don't see it as hardship where there's so many other opportunities to operate other businesses. I see it as it's not good for our zoning in town. And the way things are going as re-encroaches into the residential neighborhood, there's between the edge of that zoning, there's, I think it's nine buildings, nine houses, residential houses all the way up there. And then you're gonna start going back to automotive again. And it, it's just the sprawl. We're trying to create an area, we have a scientist, welcome to downtown Tilt. It creates this residential area and it, it just doesn't seem, um, appropriate for that type of business nor hardship. I don't want to keep repeating myself, but I think the spirit of the law, of the ordinance was to establish set areas where there's residential and they'll not be opposed on aesthetically or impact the values of property by putting the automotive in a neighborhood situation.
Thank you.
That's it, thanks.
Thanks.
I, I totally agree with what he's saying. I, I, I think the catch for me here is this isn't a residential property that's being turned into an automotive shop. This is a workshop. And we have the ability to, I totally agree with what he said about, this isn't his variance. He's asking for it, but this is this property's variance. And so, yeah, he runs a tight ship and he's gonna keep things right away. Always a believer that we put the guardrails in place, that if we were to approve this, you know, it doesn't become a junk lot. It doesn't keep those, uh, those guardrails in place. The only thing hangs me up and I, and I understand.
It could have other businesses there.
Turn around, open up a heavy, but not heavy equipment, but a, a maintenance shop there where he's running air guns and he's doing all this anyways that impacts all of these things that we just spoke about. That's my only hang up is, you know, allowing for reasonable use of the property. The property can't, it's not that it can't be a maintenance shop, it just can't be a car maintenance shop. And I just hung up on that and I don't understand it. And I guess that's my, my own burden to bear to figure out what.
I did look for a definition in the ordinance and there is no definition in the ordinance for auto repair, to give you clarity.
Auto repairs, right, okay.
For auto repair.
There's other, there's other businesses that he could have there. Just not auto repair.
Can he run a, a, a body shop? Is that considered auto repair? Spelled out in this? No, you can run a body shop in here. Mr. Mayor was welding on cars and fixing up frames. That's automotive repair to me. I don't know, it's just gray and I tend to err on the side of the landowner when things are gray, that's all.
I guess they had that, uh, that they had to get a variance in order to put in the Honda dealership up at the top. They also had to, and they, and they actually moved the, uh, the line or the, um, they extended down into a residential neighborhood when they took out those houses, because they're the, uh, the part of the Honda dealership nearest town did take out, that had that crossed over into the zoning area. So there is a residential area on Morrison Ave.
Oh, for sure, yes.
Absolutely.
Uh, just for clarification though.
I know, but that's also, I think, part of the justification for this being in a mixed use area and in fact, certain kinds of businesses to be excluded. Now, I understand your concept and gray area of dealing with what is an auto repair. And I think that is a whole separate issue. The question is now do you grant a variance in the mixed use area for another auto repair shop, period? And I don't know.
Leanne, can you just answer for clarification? Uh, the auto dealership didn't have to get a variation, a variance from auto repair. They got lighting variances and some setback variances.
Uh, they might have. I'd have to check back if they got a variance for auto repair. I, I can't answer off the top of my head.
Not for auto repair, but in, when they bought the properties, that southern part of the properties, John knows this, that was, they ended up buying property and building into the mixed use area. They did have to get a variance for that.
Right, because they did cross two districts.
Yeah.
I think that's what Chuck's addressing.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. You're talking about the encroachment into the mixed use district.
Yeah, that's all.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. Uh, any more questions for anyone?
Can I add something?
Yeah, yeah, for sure.
I appreciate and respect everyone's thoughts on it, because I care about the community as well. So I, you know, appreciate all the insight on it. I, I do know that there's easy solutions that come to me, like, you know, as, um, John's, uh, mentioned, you know, pulling in on that turn road, like, you know, the, the road that's on the side of it coming in. You know, Harbor Bydies, you know, um, you know, was, uh, the nice gentleman behind me referenced, concrete pad, you know, things like that to keep things, you know, contained or whatnot. You know, I'm very easy to work with and I want the place to look good. We wouldn't be staging twenty cars there. It would not be like a junkyard type of thing. That's just, that's not be in my scope. It's not at all what I'm interested in.
Didn't mean to imply that you would, the concern is, you know.
I know.
Ten years from now, you're like, I'm done with this and I'm moving on.
Yeah.
That next person who moves in there.
Yeah.
Now has this variance to do with it as they see fit.
I understand.
And it's putting those safeguards in place.
And I'd be more, I'd be more than acceptable of what safeguards were put into place, you know, for sure. Like, I would be very understanding of that, because I'm not gonna sell the space. It's gonna go to my, my son, you know what I mean? It's, it's a family business, um, and we like things to look the way it should. And, you know, I'm very much on the upkeep of things and, um, yeah, we just, we, we like it to look nice and operationable. Um, and we're, we're not looking to, uh, impact anyone, um, for sure. I know we've done some, uh, different things there during the day. And a garage opening faces the other neighbor, I guess the one with the wrecker. So in terms of like, I guess if you want to call it noise pollution, that's at like a minimum. We close the doors, we keep them closed. You know, if we're working on something, because we are conscientious of people. And we're in that business anyways, because of what we do for, on the landscaping end. So we're all on the same page all the time and we're very thoughtful and mindful of other people. And we, um, like to be able to do what we know how to do in terms of opening up a business, you know, because we can do this stuff, you know, it's, it's second nature. Sorry, and I think I appreciate it.
No, that's fine, yeah, thank you.
And Matt, just for clarification one more time, the category that the ordinance defines is called motor vehicle repair and maintenance.
Motor vehicle.
Motor vehicle, just as a note.
What's that?
That's just, that's just what it's called in the ordinance, motor vehicle. That's what if, what if, I believe he's asking for falls under motor vehicle repair and maintenance.
Okay, I understand.
I am, I am as probably confused as you are. Right now, if I had to base this, uh, a decision based on a hardship, I don't see that, that there is one. Question is, do I think it would be okay for this gentleman, uh, Mr. Pellerin, to run a, an auto repair business there? I probably can see that, yes, but I don't see that there is a hardship. And if that is, I believe we have used that in the past as a criteria for approving or not approving uh, certain variances. So I'm just gonna say right now, I am conflicted.
Yeah, and I, I'm a little bit with you. Uh, the way I always look at this is like, alright, you know, the, the purpose of this board is to find out how to take individual cases and apply them to laws that were written twenty years ago, thirty years ago, sometimes, who knows how long ago when it comes to the land, the dirt removal law. Take those laws that were written in X number of years ago and reapply them to the town as it exists today. That's how I look at it. And so when I see it, I'm like, well, how this guy has a, this particular applicant has a reasonable use for a lot that is already doing the thing that's being asked for. How do we safeguard that in the future of our town? And so the hardship that I see to me is using your property in a way that is beneficial in today's day and age. Uh, it's just a little bit of the eye of the beholder, I think. But.
But again, we have to think of the future, if, if it gets in somebody else's hands.
Particular application, to me, there has to be a number of vehicles limitation that have to go to planning and get all of Chuck's concerns, which are totally legitimate and sorted out.
Right.
Some sort of a visual buffer on Morrison, I mean, like.
Yeah.
The way that it's written, I, I agree. It's, there has to be far, far more, more, uh, constraints written into it. Uh, but I don't know what that looks like and I don't know if I'm the only one that thinks it's worth teasing that information out.
Matt, I just have one more thing.
Yep.
I looked up, again, the definition now that I looked at the use again and if, for, there is a definition for motor vehicle, of any self-propelled vehicle not operated exclusively upon stationary tracks, originally intended for use on public highways.
Okay.
So that's what.
Anything that can be used on a highway, public highway, public roadway can't be worked on in this.
If you go by the definition in our ordinance, yes, of motor vehicle. And the category he's applying for is motor vehicle.
Yeah. So that, that's where the, that's where it comes from. You can work on any engine you want, as long as it wasn't intended to be driven on a, for public roadway. So I, so this is where it comes to.
Which would probably also be any, any vehicle which was, would require, let's say, a license plate kind of thing.
Right.
Including, uh, probably one of those, uh, front end loaders there.
A, a Bobcat, right?
Yeah.
Any sort of, uh, so this is what jams me up is, you know, what's the best interest of the town? Is the best interest of the town to put some safeguards in here to let it be used in a small way as, uh, you know, a, a motor vehicle repair location? Or, you know, there's nothing here saying he can't park fifteen Bobcats and a handful of excavators and do work on used equipment. And that would be detrimental to all of those things that we've spelled out tonight. So I, that's where I.
Is there another business you were thinking of maybe doing?
Yeah, right. Uh, I, I wasn't looking to jam things up, you know, I'm not looking to do that.
No, I mean, this is what this board is.
Yes, I understand.
Yeah.
Yeah, no, I understand. I don't want to sell anything. That's not, I'm not looking to do that, no.
But there's certain businesses you can have there. That's what we're trying to say to you.
Yes, and then there's vaguely a lot of other things that, you know, like you were referencing.
And, and I guess Mike, another question I have is that, um, I believe it would be the planning board and not the Z B A that would have to look at all the conditions.
We can put some conditions on, you know, we can qualify them with whatever the planning, we know, like, he needs to take care of the, uh, fluid drain, uh, you know, drainage as the planning board sees fit. You know, we can.
The concrete.
Yeah, the concrete, you know, we can put those conditions on where they get their qualifiers and the numbers set by planning. So yes and no, I guess is the answer to your, to your question, like, I don't have the knowledge to know exactly what he needs to meet the requirements, but.
Could I just ask one more question?
Yeah.
Only because I'm also on the conservation commission. Right now, where do you do all your vehicle refueling?
The gas station.
Vehicle refueling, where do you do it all? Do you do it out, out in the parking lot?
No, we do it at a gas station.
So none of your vehicles, like lawnmowers and things are refueled there?
No. No, I mean, we, we go to the gas station, the guys fill them up and that's how they, that's how they operate for the mowers.
Yeah.
Yeah, that's how they do it.
I, I.
We reschedule on this anyway, because all the butters on here or?
No.
No? Okay.
Your butters were all noticed with, with it.
Yep.
Um, all right, are we done asking questions? Oh, you got one more, yeah, for sure.
Can he?
Got to speak into that.
Can he repair his own vehicles in there, oil changes and, and such?
Uh, that, I don't know the.
No, because if it has a license plate, can't do it.
Well, I mean, can you work on your own car in your driveway lot of your house? I would imagine you can.
Commercially, you're not doing it for money. He's not doing it, he's not repairing his own vehicles in there for money, but it is commercial. So where's the, you know, where does this end?
Gray area.
You know, how far do you keep taking this?
I don't have that answer. That's a valid question, I don't.
Just throwing that.
Everybody good to close public comment? Any more public comment before we do that? John? You just gotta say it.
So, you know, I, I realize butters were notified, but I, I believe that the butters on the road behind it, on the other side of the rail trail were not notified. There are two lots over there that are within the seventy-five feet of, um, the lot directly. If you look on the, uh, well.
Talking about on the, on the other side of the, uh, the railroad East Main?
Yeah.
Over there. I don't know if they would consider the butters or not.
So when we.
Boston and Mainland or whether that's, um.
State New Hampshire now, isn't it?
State land? I, I don't know that they're.
So like same thing on, uh, Maple Court, there was that path that went through there, but the butters on the other, um, I believe the shepherd, um, was served, given notice in that because they were in a butter in that case.
That case, yes, they were in a butter.
And why would this not? So I'm just bringing that up, that, that, that's a question. Typically, you would automatically just do it, because it's better to do overkill. The other, only other thing I must say is that we must remember that we have a master plan.
The other, only other thing I must say is that we must remember that we have a master plan, and that, yes, there's things that we want to do for people, but we have residents too. And we've specifically asked the residents to vote on how they would like our town to be, where they would like these things, and they specifically voted on it and said, at, at, and wasn't a long time ago, it was very recently, that they do not want, they want separate districts outlawing those.
John, I understand, and I guess this is the problem, is this is a mixed-use district. So they said they don't want automotive repair here, but they're okay with machinery repair? But based on the vote, that's what they're okay with. They're okay with machinery repair here.
And that's, and that's what they should get, right?
But not automotive repair. And so that gray area oversight, you know, is that, that they, that's the purpose, is to take all of that information and then filter it through the specific indication? Which, what would be better for our community here? To allow for a small automotive repair shop or to allow for machinery repair here?
Well, I think they made that, they made that decision when they voted and made our master plan.
So you're, are you advocating that this would be a better serve to be a machine repair shop?
Saying whatever is on the master plan in our zoning ordinance should be followed, or they should bring it up to the, bring it up to the legislative body at a voting thing to change those uses. We do change those regularly and see if people, is that what you want? Do you want this, or do you want that? Because it was very significant that this passed to not allow, and it was very specific to automotive.
All right, I will take here at face value that they're okay with excavators getting worked on there, but not cars. I don't, I think it's an oversight in, what happens in government is it got missed, and they don't want repair shops here, is really what I think is what happened.
They didn't want automotive, because we were having just so many and so many problems with all the stuff. And it was right after the Ernie's thing and the pollution.
Sure, and we're better educated now and know how to safeguard against that in the future now.
It should go back to legislative bodies to change those things. Then we don't need a zoning board.
Yeah, I'm kind of in agreement with that, that's what the purpose of this board is.
Board is.
Sort out these gray area oversights. And I'm not saying this should pass, I'm not, that's not, I'm just saying that's what this board exists for, is to navigate those holes in legislative body zoning. That's the purpose of this board's existence.
Because somebody may have a hardship.
Yeah. But okay, we're just addressing from what we're here for. All right, we're gonna close public comments. Yeah, one last thing, and then we're gonna.
Okay, thank you, I appreciate it. I know that the same abutting neighbors were notified, the same exact ones that I notified for the landscaping business. So I believe, don't quote me on this, but the ones that John was referring to aren't, weren't part of it.
You can figure out, you got eight butters that were noticed. But one, five, six, I count seven properties if you include those two behind you.
Okay, you probably have to include the railroad bed too.
That would be eight if you include the railroad.
And that would be the state of New Hampshire, I believe. I know we copied the same list, because I remember when I was speaking with her in the office, she said, oh, this is easy, it's the same ones as you did in 2019. Just, I just wanted to.
Yeah, to John, to allay your concerns, there were eight butters noticed. And looking at the tax act, appears to have but eight, including those two lots. I don't have a list of the butters, I just have eight butters, a mailing fee of $10 for eight butters. And I'm just going off of that.
But I'm not sure 65 and 66 isn't a butter.
I just, if you count, what are the eight if you don't count?
Because the railroad bed isn't a butter.
One, two, three, six, seven, eight, that's where I'm getting with the, including the railroad bed.
This would be the 75-foot butters list with a list in the headline.
So if, if an a butter was not notified and is aggrieved by the decision, they have a right to appeal the decision based on that they were not notified, and they can make that case upon your decision.
Okay, thank you. I don't know what this. Oh, 18 lowest drag, that's up here. Okay, so they, these the back ones are not abutted, but this over here is considered an a butter, I guess.
They're in between.
Yeah.
But I think he's saying there's 75 feet butters, 75-foot of butters list, but you don't go, no. It's actually an a butter, correct? Right, that's why the state of New Hampshire is on here for railroads.
Okay, let's close public comment and move to deliberate. Putting on board?
Yep.
I agree with everyone's concerns, I'm totally on board. I just think that there's a lot of gray area here, and when there's a lot of gray area here, I like to suss out the details that maybe a happy medium can be met. If the board doesn't feel that the happy medium can be met, I don't feel it's worth taking the time to do that. So I'm kind of feeling you guys out.
I'm with Chuck and Ann as far as hardship.
Okay, so you guys are, don't need to tease this out any.
The only reason, because, you know, you look at a variance, they have to prove a hardship. If the building was sitting there empty and they couldn't rent it or couldn't do anything with, that would be a hardship.
Sounds good.
He could do another business that's not on that, you know.
You guys ready for, to make them, to move through the five cases here, the five sections?
Yep.
Number one, granted, the variance would not be contrary to the public interest. Like I said, I don't believe this is public, with certain constraints, this would be contrary to the public interest. I don't know how you guys feel. If the variance were granted, the spirit of the ordinance would be observed. We're not really spilling out any details, so the way it's written, the spirit of the ordinance isn't met. Granted, the variance would do substantial justice. There's no real evidence in justice one way or the other here, we've talked about. If the variance were granted, the values of the surrounding properties would not be diminished. Again, there's no evidence to prove one way or the other on values going up or down. And unnecessary hardship owing to a special condition of the property that distinguishes other properties in the area, denial of variance would result in unnecessary hardship. That group here does not believe that that is met. And proposed use is a reasonable one. All right, a motion whenever you guys are ready. Make our motions in the paper.
So just as a point of order, from now on, when you do the motions, you certainly can make your motion the affirmative, but then you need to go back and make a second motion like we did the last time and list what criteria you're denying it on legally, so you have to.
If we do it in the affirmative?
Yeah.
Okay, maybe that was a Dari thing, Dari always wanted us to do them.
Yeah, and it's, a lot of boards like to do that because it seems like clear when they're voting, but you do have to state why you're denying it. So when you make a motion, the affirmative, and then all vote in the negative, then you haven't stated what criteria you've denied it on. So, you know, you can either do one of two things, you can, someone can make a motion to approve, and if it fails, you have to follow up with a second motion to deny, or somebody can start the motion by making a motion to deny. I don't know which way this board's going, but I'm just saying, it has to, at the end.
You have to justify why you went.
Why you deny, say the word deny based on criteria, one, two, three, four, five, which ones?
It doesn't matter to me which way we go, I don't, I don't have a preference. So whoever makes the motion, I will support your route.
So if we make a motion to deny, do we have to state in our motion why we're denying it? Okay. Or we can continue with the affirmative?
I usually try not to make.
I know, I make a motion to approve, ZBA 23-14.
All right, motion's been made, any seconds?
I'll second them.
Been made and seconded. Those in favor of approving variance, I'm gonna get the number right, ZB 23-14, say aye. Aye. Those opposed?
Nay.
Nay. And nays have it, it does not pass.
And the reason, now we have to state why. Now we're making, yes.
Oh, you should.
The hardship.
So I make a motion, it's an emotion, we have to make, make an emotion to deny the 23-14 for not meeting, category was a number of five, unnecessary hardship.
Vote on that? Okay, so now we're voting on agreeing on why it was denied. Yes, okay. All right, so a motion's been made that it has been denied because of category five, unnecessary hardship. Any seconds? Seconded by Chuck, those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
The ayes have it, it is passed. That is, way to say that.
I'd like to just go on record saying, I really hope that there's a chance that this may be.
Right.
Permit you to do that, I do. I guess I kind of feel like I have to uphold what the zoning ordinances are. Nothing personal, believe me.
Thank you.
Sorry about that.
There's another business you can open up that.
I want to put a bunch of equipment there, so, or bring in boats?
Yeah.
Or bring in boats, so, okay.
Maybe you'll think of some.
Can I appeal this? What's that? Can I appeal this? You got 30 days to appeal? You have to provide criteria of what you're, like, you can't just appeal it, you have to say what you want to appeal it on.
Okay.
Okay.
All right.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
All right, we gotta do minutes?
I'll move to approve the minutes from the July 18th meeting.
I'll second it.
All right, a motion's been made and approved, a made, jeez, I cannot speak. A motion's been made to approve the minutes from the July 18th meeting. Those in favor? Oh, we gotta, we gotta vote her. Second the motion, sorry.
I did second it.
You did second, made and seconded. Those in favor of approving the minutes from July 18th signify by saying aye.
Aye.
That passes. Have any other business? Nope.
I make a motion to adjourn.
Second.
Seconded to adjourn. Those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Meeting is adjourned at 7:03.
I didn't like having to do.
No, me either, but I mean, it's too bad he can't do another business, something else.
For me is, this is like, that's the purpose of this board, is to find the places where the zoning law as written doesn't fit, and.